Good evening, everybody. It's a little bit past seven. I want to thank you for your patience. We've implemented a new kind of go-to-meeting video/audio program here that we're doing for the first time. So Maura, Sean, and Karen Canfield are all online and on video. And Karen, Conley, and myself are here distancing ourselves, wearing masks. Unfortunately, you can't hear me, and I can't. My glasses fog up if I wear the mask. So here we are. So I'd like to, before I call the meeting to order, just go over the process where the public can participate. And I'll go over the phone numbers that you call in. Michelle Segazey's here. She's monitoring the phone lines, and she will be queuing you up and putting you online to discuss the different topics. So if you do wish to call this audio conference, you can call the following numbers: 425-436-6308, You'll have to put in an access code, which is 817-651, and hit pound. Again, that access code is 817-651-pound. And then you'll come into the switchboard, and Michelle will take care of you from there. Did I miss anything? Awesome. All right, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda? All of the votes tonight will be done by roll call because everybody is not in the room.
So moved.
Second by?
Second.
Ms. Curran?
Second.
All in favor, or we'll do roll call.
Mr. Vignali?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Great. Okay. We're going to start this evening with a report from the town administrator. Jim, if you can get us going?
Sure. We'll go through this very quickly. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on COVID updates. We did one yesterday. I'll do another one on Thursday. We had no cases, new cases yesterday, no new cases today, so we're at the 67. We were Monday morning. According to the Board of Health, we have eight cases still under the 14-day quarantine under those 67 cases, so the majority of our cases have moved off. The Health Director will be issuing a face mask advisory tomorrow, strongly recommending that people wear face masks. The Board is not yet moving to a mandatory face mask. Couple issues with that if you want to get into it, but right now, we will issue an advisory. If you're in an establishment that's open to the public, you should be wearing a mask. If you're outside and you're at a place that you can't social distance, you should be wearing a mask. The Lighthouse Point, I directed the DPW to reduce the parking out there. We've reduced that by about a third. I was out there Saturday. There were maybe two free parking spaces. Sorry. At Lighthouse Point, it was jammed. So we reduced some of the parking out there, and we'll keep an eye on that, keep monitoring the other places in the town to see what we need to do when the weather is getting nicer. Finally, we received some guidance from the state on boating and other various marine and inland water-related activities. In a nutshell, from my reading of these guidelines, it looks like we will be able to open the marina for recreational boating on May 15th. The safe operation of recreational boats is permitted under the following guidelines: Only persons from the same household should be together on a boat at one time; No gathering or groups of persons from multiple households will be permitted on boat ramps, docks, piers, etc. And all users shall practice strict social distancing. Recreational craft should remain a safe distance apart tying boats or other craft together is prohibited. And all recreational boating is subject to the discretion of local officials, the harbor master, and law enforcement. So I sent this to the harbor master. I sent it to the Board of Health Director, told him to come up with the guidelines that we'll be using and get them out to boaters. But again, from my reading of this, it looks like we will be able to open the marinas on May 15th, which is good. Bad enough not having the golf course open. I can't imagine what people would do if we told them they couldn't go out in their boats. But we'll have to keep an eye on that. Grinding for the paving started. There's downed on Oceanside grinding, so you'll see those out on the roads that we've specified. Once they get the grinding done, we'll start putting the paving down. That's kind of weather-dependent. Lastly, for tonight, on a happy note for Bob, but a sad note for us, May 1st will be the retirement date for our Director of Golf Operations, Bob Sanderson. Bob has been the Director at Widow's Walk, Bob has been at Widow's Walk since it's opened in 1997, and he's been the Director of Golf Operations since 1999. So Bob saw that go from nothing to, I think, one of the nicest courses around on the South Shore. Ups, downs, bad weather, good weather. It's been Bob, Bob, Bob. It's really going to be hard to picture Widow's Walk without Bob. But I want to wish him luck in his retirement. He'll be sorely missed, and I guess he's going to miss how we're going to open the golf course with COVID-19. But Bob's done a great job there. He will be sorely missed. We have hired a new Director of Golf for the golf course, Ian Kelly. Ian's actually coming to us from the Blue Hills Country Club, and he's already started working. He's been working the same as Bob for about two weeks. And I sent him a directive today telling him to work with the Health Department to come up with guidelines for opening the golf course. So if and when the state issues that directive, we'll be ready to go. So that's really all I have for tonight.
Great. Well, I know I speak for the board. Bob, thank you for all the time, energy, and effort you put into that golf course as it was ranked one of the best golf courses in the state for many years, and it's a great place to play, and you've done a great job. So enjoy your retirement, and thank you for all the good work you did here. And welcome, Ian. You know, we're looking forward to working with you and continuing all the great stuff we're doing on the golf course. If anyone had anything to add?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Bob as well and wish him well, and maybe now he'll be able to enjoy playing golf instead of supervising. And who knew that there'd be a pandemic to worry about? They worry about droughts down there. They worry about floods. They worry about pests, but a pandemic is not something that was on anyone's radar. But congratulations to Bob, and thank you.
Great. Just raise your hand if you guys want to say something. Otherwise, Maura?
I do want to thank Bob Tony, so thank you. You know, he was a constant advocate for improving the course, and he really fought hard to continue to make that course the best course on the South Shore. So great job. You know, he will be missed, and I just personally want to say thank you and wish him well.
Great. Okay. I do want to just talk for one second, go back to Jim's point on the whole social distancing and the stuff that the town is going through. You know, common sense, I think, is really the way to lead here. If you are going out in public, wear a mask. If you think you're going to be in a situation, you're going to be close to somebody, wear a mask. If you don't know if you should wear a mask, wear a mask. And, you know, just do the right thing. For the most part, you know, I've been out for walks around town. I know all the selectmen have, and we've seen people. And for the most part, everyone's doing a great job. You know, when you're walking up to somebody, you make space for them, and there's not been, hasn't been a lot of people congregating. So overall, I think the town's doing very well. We did spike this weekend where one day we had seven cases, another day we had three or four, but since then, it's come down. And as probably most of you know, the mayor, excuse me, the governor made an announcement today that all nonessential businesses are going to be closed through, for the next couple of weeks, through the 18th, I believe it is. So there'll be two more weeks where we hope this levels off, and then we'll all see a very desired change in the way that we're living right now. So hang with us and just get through the next couple of weeks and see where we are.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Jim, the Board of Health does regulate restaurant kitchens, correct?
Yes.
Is it within their purview to require people handling, preparing food, to wear masks because?
It is within the purview of the Board of Health to require masks, yes.
All right. Well, then I would ask that that be done because there have been some instances. I've been getting a lot of takeout, and mostly, it's been really good, but there have been a couple of instances that people have talked to me about where they've walked into a food establishment, and no one in the establishment working there was wearing a mask. So I think it's better for their business that they do. So, thank you.
Again, guys, if you want to say something, just raise a finger or something, and I'll, I'll, not that finger, Sean. Okay.
I mean, it's just a couple of issues. I don't want to belabor this, but a couple of issues that I brought up that I've asked questions and only haven't gotten answers from. So we require masks. The Board of Health agent goes into an establishment that's violating the mask guidelines. Who issues the ticket? The Board of Health agent doesn't have a ticket book, doesn't have the authority to issue a ticket, so now do we have to call the police to issue that ticket? So now the police can go down and issue a ticket. Is that ticket a civil violation or a criminal violation? I've asked those questions. I've looked for guidance from the state. I haven't gotten answers from yet, and that's one of the reasons that Drew's kind of hesitating to do it. It's easy to say you have to wear a mask. It's hard to say how you're going to enforce it. That's...
Well, I mean, I just think that the Board of Health does have the right to close down a restaurant, doesn't it, if it's in violation of various codes?
Yep. That's not a code.
Well...
That wouldn't be a code violation. That'd be a violation of an emergency order on the Board of Health.
So in other words, you would have to send the police down, and they'd have to issue a ticket?
I think, yeah. Again, that's what we've asked.
Well, you know, I don't want to belabor the point either, but I guess...
Nope, I will, I will...
My best guess, my best advice to people is if they do walk into an establishment and they're not using, wearing masks, that I wouldn't go back there. But I would hate to have an establishment lose business because they're not understanding, perhaps, what their obligation should be, just to do the right thing. Because I think if you're handling food and preparing food and giving food out, that it's really important to be overly cautious. So that's...
I'll convey that to the, to the Health Agent.
I'd be surprised if we didn't go down and tell the owner of a restaurant and warn them that they didn't change their, their stuff.
Right.
So I think, you know, a letter or just a visit from the Board of Health would...
Or even a phone call.
Yeah, or a phone call.
So, thank you.
Anything else before we get on to the agenda? Okay.
Sean, Tony?
Yeah, Maura?
Ask a question. Jim, the guidelines for the harbor for May 15th, is that from the state?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just missed the beginning.
Great. So the first topic that we're going to discuss this evening is a change of a liquor license hours. And this is for the 7-Eleven at 337 Gannett Road. Doug White is the area manager, and Mary Ellen Hayden is the store manager. Are they on the line?
Doug?
Tony, this is Doug.
Hi, Doug. How are you?
And I believe Mary Ellen's on. How are you?
Mary Ellen, last 49403. Oh, she can't. Let me unmute. Hold on. I think that's her.
Mary Ellen, are you there?
She might have her phone on.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Oh, great. So tell us, I think it's pretty straightforward, but it looks like you want to extend your hours from 12 to 10 to 10 to 12.
The liquor hours right now on Sundays in that store are 12 to 10. We just wanted to change to 10 to 10, which is pretty much was most of the other establishments in Situate are on on.
Okay.
That one always had. I just took it over about a year ago. Mary Ellen's been there since, you know, they brought the liquor in. It's a corporate store, and, you know, that was what they had. And we've had a lot of people, especially now where Curtis is closed on Sundays, we've had a lot of people come in at that, you know, 10:30, 11 o'clock in the morning, and, you know, we can't serve them until noon and that. So that's kind of why we came in front of the Board.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's drawn in the letter of the corporate vote.
Okay. Yeah, so just to get it right, you wanted to go to, from 10 to 10 is the hours you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Karen Conley, do you have any questions?
No. Fine.
Sean, any questions?
I would say it puts them on the same playing field as some of the other establishments in town. They're 10 a.m. on Sundays as well.
Right.
I think it's, I think they have every right to do this.
Right. So if you didn't hear Sean, he said that's, that's on the guidelines with all the other establishments in town, and, you know, it's only fair. Maura, anything?
I don't have any issues with it, Tony.
Okay. Karen? Canfield?
I don't have issues, but I just want to clarify. In the documentation, it looks like they want to go from, it's now 12 to 10, but they want to go 10 to 12.
They want to go...
Yeah.
They want to go 10 to 10. That was a typo.
10 to 10. 10 to 10. Okay. The motion doesn't say that, so...
Right. We'll change that when we get there.
Okay. So 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. on Sundays. No, I think it's consistent with the other businesses, and I know that, you know, especially when the weather gets better, people are going to want to pick it up for their boat.
Good.
And they can grab dog bone.
Yep. And your dog agrees also. Great. And just to note, since you've been running the establishment, there's been no issues. There's been no violations or anything, so that's great news as well. And that's, that's really what we care the most about is, you know, the violation serving properly, and you've done a great job so far. So can I have a motion, Karen Conley?
Move to approve a change of Sunday hours to, from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. for 7-Eleven and Massachusetts Inc., 337 Gannett Road, pending A-B-C-C approval.
Second by Ms. Curran?
Second.
Further discussion? Anyone on the phone that has any comments?
We'd have to go into Q and A, Tony. Would you like me to?
Okay. Yeah, can we go to Q and A, please?
Q and A session has started.
So we've just opened up the phone lines. I'll repeat the number real quick for anyone watching: 425-436-6308, or 6338, or 6300. And the access code is 817-651, and then hit pound. Is there anyone on the phone that has any comments for this item of the hour change for 7-Eleven?
Nobody's in the queue, so...
Okay.
I will end Q and A.
Thank you.
Q and A session is over.
Great. That being said, I have a, I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote?
Mr. Vignali?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Okay, so that is unanimous, 5-0. Thank you, Mary Ellen. Thank you, Doug. Congratulations. Your hours will now be 10 to 10 once we get the A-B-C-C approval.
All right. Thank you, guys. Be safe.
You, too.
Thank you.
See you, Doug.
Thank you. Good luck.
See ya.
So the next topic for discussion is setting the poll hours for the annual town election on June 13th. Is Kathy on the line?
I am. I'm right here.
Hi, Kathy. So just a quick overview. Our town election is set for Saturday, June 13th, and...
Correct.
And we are going to, that is for all the local elections. There's someone, two people running for one of the selectman's seats, two people running for one of the school committee's seats, and then some reelection positions as well. Given the pandemic and the social distancing that we have now, the town clerk has come up with a plan, that I'll let her describe, to give everyone the opportunity to vote in the safest, safest manner as possible. So Kathy, I'll give it to you.
So, okay. Sorry. Thank you. Bear with me. So due to COVID-19 and the unknown of where we will be with social distancing, the bill signed by the Governor allows shorter poll hours and early voting by mail only for this annual town election. The polls can be opened for no less than four hours. However, I am requesting reducing poll hours to five hours. I would strongly encourage voters that they vote by mail by submitting either an E.V., early voting, or A.V., absentee voting request form, rather than vote in person on Election Day. And what is the difference between the two forms? The early voting allows the voter to request a ballot be mailed with no excuse needed. An absentee ballot can be requested by a voter to vote by mail, or to request a ballot be mailed to a family member if they cannot vote in person on Election Day due to work, travel, religion. Now, the Governor got a little confusing in doing the early voting because he also said in the legislature that the, being health compromised or being afraid to vote in person due to COVID is a legitimate excuse to vote absentee. So it gets a little confusing, but the absentee ballot request form can also be used to request ballots for a specific election or all elections remaining in the rest of the year if we have those two fall elections. So that being said, in addition, the voter registration deadline is 20 days before, and that's June, excuse me, 10 days before, which is June 3rd. And people can register online, the Secretary of State's website, or there's forums at the front door at Town Hall. And the warrant will be posted within the guidelines of Mass General Law, which is usually seven days. However, I'm supposed to post with the warrant the Governor's bill, the vote of the Board of Selectmen to postpone the election, and the sample ballot with the warrant. So that has to be done no sooner than 20 days before the election, so that's why I'm here tonight. This office and staff is preparing for social distancing on Election Day at the polling location by marking check-in lines with sixteen distancing tapes, social distancing signs. Voting booths will be spaced accordingly and have less staff workers who will be offered masks and/or face shields, hand sanitizer, and gloves. If voters do come to vote in person, I would suggest that they wear a face mask, bring their own black ballpoint pen, however sterilized pens will be provided. Workers are bringing their own lunch. No food will be served or provided to them. They have to bring their own. The office has already posted the E.V. and the A.V. forms on the town clerk's webpage, as well as the sample ballot and other town election information, and I'm hoping that we'll continue with Situate Facebook, Situate TV, S-C-TV, and information will be on the Mariner as well, and Michelle will share this information with the link as I put the warrant, when I put the warrant up. Kevin Kelly put up a mailbox out front, and in it are the A.V., absentee voter forms, and the E.V., the early voting form requests in plastic. They're out there for the public to pick up, and you can put it in the mail slot. You can email it to me, or you can do snail mail. So that's the review.
Great. Thanks, Kathy. I'm going to try and give a little synopsis just to make sure that everybody heard it. So the town clerk has got a system set up where she's hoping that everybody votes early voting via the mail. And there's two forms that you can request. One is a early voter, and one is an absentee voter. The early voting, you do not need a reason for that form. The absentee one, you're supposed to have a reason, but COVID-19 is a valid reason. So she has put these forms available for you to go online and request one of these absentee or late, or, excuse me, early election to be mailed to you. You then check it, whoever you want to vote for, and then you either mail it back to town, or you, or you bring it and deliver it through the mail slot here to the town clerk.
Tony, I have to interrupt you for a minute. I'm sorry. This isn't a voting. This is a request to have the ballot mailed, so they're not voting for anybody on this form.
Right. Yeah, so I'll just...
Okay.
So what you're going to do is, the first form that you're going to fill out is requesting a ballot to be mailed to you. And then you'll fill out the ballot and either mail it back or drop it off at Town Hall. For the request for one of those ballots, you can email it to Kathy, you can mail it, you can just drop it off here. It's a very simple form. Just put your name and address, and I think there's one or two other fields. And then, like I said, the town clerk's office will mail you a ballot, which you will then fill out. In lieu of that, there still is going to be an open election at the gym at the high school. And what Kathy's going to do is spread the gym out and have each district much further apart than you're used to seeing. She's going to have spacing for everybody to stand by, and you'll be queued outside if necessary, you know, keeping your social distancing, and you will be able to go in and fill out your ballots that way as well, but we're hoping to minimize that. And what Kathy's asking for this evening is to reduce the polling hours from nine to five on that Saturday, which is an hour more than the state is allowing you to do, excuse me, I think I said nine to five. I meant nine to two. Nine to two on that Saturday, the 13th. So you'll have two options: request a ballot and mail your ballot in, or go to the high school and vote during those abbreviated hours. Did I miss anything, Kathy?
No, I think that you covered it very well. Thank you for that.
Any questions from the board members? Karen Canfield?
I just want to clarify for people that when you get your ballot, that it's a prepaid envelope? You don't need to worry about...
No, it's not. No.
It's not ever?
It's not, Karen. No, we don't provide postage. We mail them out, okay? But they have to return them. That's where they can also, keep in mind, too, both your ballot request forms, either one of those, has to be signed. And also, when you vote your ballot, you have to put it in a small brown envelope, and you have to sign that envelope. We cannot accept a ballot without a signature on the envelope. Then that envelope goes in the white mailing envelope. Whether you mail it back or drop it in the mail slot at the front door, either way, it should be packaged in the white mailing envelope. But that little small brown envelope has to be signed, just like your ballot request form. This is our paper trail. This is to prevent vote of fraud.
So just to repeat for the audience what Kathy said, the envelopes are not pre-stamped to you, for you to mail back to us. They're going to be mailed to you, and you can either mail them back to us, once they're inside two envelopes, your voting envelope, which you have to sign, and then in a white envelope to mail it to, or you can just bring it to Town Hall and put it through the slot.
Correct.
Maura?
Yep. Kathy, can you verify the dates that they're available and when they have to be back in?
Sure, I absolutely can. So it's kind of ironic, but the last day that you can request the ballot, okay, is noon the day before an election, an absentee ballot and the early voting ballot. However, we're only doing them by mail, so it's not like you can come in, fill out a form at quarter of 12 the day before, because we're not doing in-office voting unless the, the, what am I trying to say? Unless this is all lifted and Town Hall's open. But still, early voting, even if we open, early voting will only be done by mail, so now we'll switch to absentee if you're here in person. And that's up until noon the day before the election, which is Friday, the 12th, June 12th. So, and, oh, and the ballots, if you get a ballot mailed to you, that has to be returned and reach us before the polls close on Election Day. Now, we don't staff this office on Saturdays. We will be at the polls. So if you don't think it's going to make it, bring it over to the, have somebody drop it off at the polling location for you. It has to reach us before the polls close.
So that, so that's an option to actually walk your ballot into the voting...
Yes.
...area?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because there's nobody here to receive it on Election Day.
Right. So we should just put the date, right? We should just say that you have to have it in Town Hall by X date, if it's the 12th, right, the day before?
Yeah.
Or walk it in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, my only other question was, you know, this is new, really, just at a broader scale because of the early voting piece. How does, how do we provide our voters with a comfort level that we receive their ballot? Is there any sort of mechanism that we're tracking what goes out and what comes in? I can't imagine there is, but just...
There is not a, for them, there's not. I mean, they just mailed the ballot back, and they can call me to see if we received it. But basically, what happens is, is when I get those ballots back, we have our state system, and I pull up the voter, and I can see when I mailed the ballot, because we entered that date, and then we put when we receive it. And if we reject a ballot because they didn't sign that little brown envelope, we put rejected, and we put the date we mailed of the second ballot. So there are checks and balances of sending ballots and receiving them back from the voter. Plus, once we print those check-in books, it'll have an AV or an EV next to their name, showing that they requested those ballots and we got them back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sean, do you have anything?
No, I've lost you guys for a while. Just, I'm on the telephone now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, no, I don't have any questions.
Karen Canfield, you look like you have another question?
I don't.
Okay. Karen Conley?
No.
Okay. Great. Can we open it up to Q and A?
Sure.
Q and A session has started.
Is there anyone on the line now that has a question for the polling hours?
There are only two people, just FYI.
Okay. Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion, Karen Conley?
I move to set the poll hours from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM for the annual town meeting election, to be held on Saturday, June 13th, 2020, at the Situate High School Gymnasium, located at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Way.
Second by...
Second.
Ms. Curran. Further discussion?
Yep.
Hearing none. We'll close the Q and A.
Q and A session is over.
And we'll have a roll call vote.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Kathy.
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Welcome, and thank you for choosing...
Yes.
So that is unanimous, five to zero, to change the polling hours, and also to just suggest that voters use the mailing method. Kathy, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. Thanks for getting the word out there. I appreciate your help, and everybody stay healthy, please.
Thanks, Kathy.
Same here.
You too, Kathy. Thank you.
So the next topic for discussion is a construction project to replace and repair the berm on Egypt Man Hill Cobble, uh, no, Egypt Man Hill.
Yeah, we're not gonna be taking that up tonight.
Okay.
There was a protest of the Bid Award, and the Attorney General has not ruled on that yet.
Okay. All right, so we'll postpone that to another meeting. The next topic for discussion tonight is some tax relief legislation that we've been talking about for several weeks. Jim, do you want to go over that?
Yeah, so the board's been asking about this probably since it passed, and we haven't put it on the agenda yet. For a couple reasons. I think the big one was, the Treasurer's Office was getting calls from Citibank and Wells Fargo, asking if we were gonna put off the date that taxes were gonna be due. This legislation was not designed to help Citibank and Wells Fargo. They already have your money to pay your taxes, so we didn't put it on the agenda. The law provides three measures of relief for the Board of Selectmen to consider. The first one would extend the due dates of property taxes from May 1st to June 1st. In conjunction with that, it would move the, the second option would be to move the date for exemptions and deferral applications also from, to June 1st, from May 1st to June 1st, to go inside with the tax being moved. And the third one is a local option to waive interest on certain payments made after due dates, and that would change the interest rates from anything that was due after March 10th, as long as it was paid by June 29th. There'd be no interest on it. If you paid it after that, you would have interest all the way back to whenever the bill was due. So those are the three options. Sometimes they've done all three, some have done one or the other. I think what I'm recommending to you tonight is to do the extension of the real estate date from May 1st to June 1st, and the extension of the exemption and deferral applications to June 1st. You know, I know some people will take advantage of it, they won't pay their taxes because they don't have to, even though they can. But this will provide some relief to some people who are fairly, fairly hard-hit by this pandemic, and impacted very, very strongly by it. So, we're at 90% of our collection, I believe. By the time we post this, those other companies would have to have already started their transfer to get in on time. So, we feel pretty good, Nancy and I feel pretty good that we will be okay from a cash standpoint. We're also going out to do our ban extension tomorrow. So once we do that, that'll help our liquidity, because we'll be able to repay back all our accounts that we borrowed against on our bans. So our liquidity will be good too, if people don't pay their taxes. But we think we can do these, it's a small measure of relief for some people. Again, different towns are doing different things, some all three, some one, some two. And there are a couple towns that have done nothing, they just don't, aren't gonna do it.
Right. So just in a quick summary, you know, unfortunately, the town needs the tax money to run, so we can't just, you know, kind of defer everybody's payments. But we do understand that people, a lot of people are very hard-hit from this, a lot of local businesses are, and a lot of people are out of work. And those are the people that we're really trying to give this relief to. And like I said, we've been talking about this for several weeks, and at this point in time, I think what we're, what Jim is recommending, we think is the prudent thing to do, is extend the due date at least a month to see what's going on, and what the world's like in a couple of weeks, and then if we have to make any changes from there. So, you know, moving the due date, clearly, there's no penalties assessed because the due date is moved a month later. So, it kind of does both, all the whole, the whole tack, the whole task by doing the first two motions. And then, you know, I think we can reevaluate and see what's going on there. The fact that we do have most of our money in for this quarter anyways is good, and the ban, you know, where our stabilization fund is fully utilized at this point in time, so getting some of that money actually as a loan, as opposed to our own cash, is a good, a good thing that that's happening as well. So, so that's what Jim's recommending. I think it's, you know, it's the prudent thing to do, and I think there's a lot of people out there that need this relief right now, so hopefully they'll take advantage of it. I'll open it up to the board, if, just like I said, wave if you want to talk. Karen Canfield?
I just want to note that in our backup material is a letter from the Board of Assessors...
Oh, right.
That's also in favor of this motion.
Yeah, good point. I meant to mention that as well. So Steve Guard sent us a letter that highly recommended this as well, so, the Board of Assessors. Anyone else on the video? Karen Conley, any?
No, happy to support it.
Sean? Nope.
Tony, no, I just want to say thank you. I think it's a great, good, a great gesture, and I had a couple of folks call me.
Okay. Great, so I'll just repeat, the two motions that Karen Conley will read right now are going to postpone the taxes that are due for both businesses and residents from May 1st till June 1st.
Move to extend the due dates for the real and property tax from May 1st to June 1st, 2020.
Second by...
Second.
Mr. Harris?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Vignani?
Oh wait, you know, can I stop for one second? Can we open it up to Q and A, in case there's anyone on there?
Yep.
Q and A session has started.
There's one person on the line, do you have any comments on the proposed extension for property taxes?
He didn't go in the queue.
Okay. Great, so we have a motion and a second, and we'll do the roll call vote. We're gonna close Q and A. Yeah, Mike?
Q and A session is over.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris? Mr. Harris?
We've got these squiggly things on our...
Do you have him muted?
No, he's there.
I heard him say yes. Ms. Canfield?
Yes. Right there.
Oops, we just went down.
We did?
Or my...
Sean, can you hear us?
I don't need to see them.
Ms. Canfield?
I can hear you.
Okay. Yes or no? Ms. Canfield?
Tell me. Yes.
Um, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Great, so that's a unanimous vote, five to zero on the first motion.
Move to extend due date for exemption and deferral applications to June 1st, 2020, extension of the due date for property tax exemptions and deferrals to June 1, 2020. Is that right?
Yes. Can I have a second for that motion?
Second.
By Ms. Canfield?
Second.
Great. Opened up to Q and A.
Q and A session has started.
Is there one person on the line?
There is, but if he wants to go in the queue, he has to...
Okay.
...punch his button, so we...
Okay, so if you want to join the discussion, we'll give you a minute. I mean, ten seconds.
[laughing]
Okay, having, seeing none, we'll close Q and A.
Q and A session is over.
And I think I have a motion and a second, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Hold on, he might be just joining us again. Sean?
Yeah, I keep losing my, yes, Michelle, I keep losing my connection.
That's okay, Lorraine's doing a roll call vote. Do we need to repeat it?
For the second motion?
The property tax exemption motion.
For the exemption, Sean.
I guess, yes.
Okay. I knew I heard you say yes. Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Thank you, Jim, for looking into that, and that's effective as of now, right?
Yep.
Great. Okay. The, the last topic of discussion for this evening is the discussion in changing the annual town meeting from its current May 11th date. Jim?
So I haven't gotten anything from the moderator. The governor made the announcement today that the, basically the stay-at-home order will extend to May 18th, which would include our town meeting. So I'm gonna assume at this point that Jim will be issuing another delay of town meeting, but I haven't had a chance to speak to him since the governor's announcement to see when he's gonna do that. So, we'll have to come back to that. But unless we want to try to have a town meeting with less than 10 people, I think we're gonna have to extend it.
So, I just prepared a motion that you support the moderator's decision, if you choose, because there's no select meeting in between now and then?
But didn't he do it without...
He did it last time for the, for the current one, you'd have to do it again, because he's gonna have to extend it again.
Did we approve it? I thought he was, had the power to...
We supported his decision. So Lorraine has given you a motion to support whatever he decides, I don't know if you want, if you want to give Jim Toomey that blank approval, but...
Well, we can support the extension if he does that, if that's what we feel. I mean, clearly, you know, it's within the governor's period of social distancing and not having people gather in large groups, so I don't, I don't think we can have the town meeting. So, I would assume that the moderator's going to make that, that judgment. Why don't, does anyone have a problem with just accepting the moderator's decision to do that, making a motion to accept his decision, or making a motion to accept his decision if he extends it? Because I don't know that I would agree if he didn't extend it. I can't see you now, so, can you see them?
Are you getting this, a law and Karen a question?
So if they, so if you have a comment, just speak up. How about Karen Conley, I mean, excuse me, Karen Canfield?
Karen Canfield.
Karen Canfield, do you have any comment?
I'm not, no.
No.
Nope. Sean?
No.
Maura?
I do, I have a question. Doesn't this impact our election date as you move back town meeting?
No, I checked with Kathy.
I don't think so.
I always thought we, okay, I always thought election always had to be six weeks following town meeting.
I thought so too, but didn't Jim tell me that we could have the town meeting after the election?
Yeah, I mean, the change in the law allows us to do that. We have the right to make the changes because of the emergency.
Because of the pandemic? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so...
I have no problem supporting Jim Toomey.
Okay, so can I ask Karen Conley to make a motion?
Yes, move to support the town moderator's decision about extending the date of the town meeting.
About, okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? When you say about, you mean to extend it, I guess?
Yes, to extend it.
Okay. Did you get that, Lorraine?
Yeah, I mean, I have it written up.
Well, I don't have it in front of me, so I did the best I could. Yeah. It's fine, though, right?
Yeah.
The motion's fine.
Mr. Harris did.
We'll open it up to question, Q and A, if there's someone on the line?
Q and A session has started.
Do you have any comments or discussion for the extension of annual town meeting? Whoever's on the phone. Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes?
Mr. Harris?
No.
Is he on?
So, you know what, let me end the queue.
Q and A session is over.
He had to call back. Sean, you there?
Guys, fine. I hear you guys fine.
Okay.
Okay. So your vote is yes?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. Yes.
Okay, and your vote for the town, town meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so we have some other business. I just want to make a quick comment, that we are, clearly, these meetings don't flow as well as they have in the past. And just know that the only business that we're gonna be conducting is business that has to occur, so we're not gonna have any topic discussions on some of the more involved things that we've been going over for the past several years. It's really just business that needs to be decided before the next meeting, and, you know, once we get through this whole scenario that we're going through, then we'll have a meeting for most of these topics where the public can participate in a normal fashion. So, I know I've said it a couple times, but I just want to reiterate that, that Lorraine and Jim are really only putting topics of discussion on here that need to be decided for that. So that being said, I'll, I'll open it up to liaison, liaison reports, but I don't think there's been many meetings going on. I'll have, well, actually Karen has a very...
I have a very important announcement to make. The school committee last night voted unanimously to offer a contract to Mr. William Burkhead, and he's, he's a really solid candidate, and I think the town will be well-served. And I think I've said it before, but I'll say it again, the school committee has moved mountains to do this, and the fact that they were able to get this decision made well before the present superintendent's contract expires is a real testament to the work that they did, and they did it almost all remotely. So, just want to extend my congratulations to the school committee and the search committee for the good work that they did.
Great. And I want to thank you, Karen, you were involved in the process from the beginning. They narrowed it down to three very strong candidates, you said?
Yep.
And then they choose Mr. Burkhead to be the new superintendent of the Situate School System. So, congratulations to him, and thanks for everyone that was involved in that. Any other liaison? Maura, do you have any?
I do, Tony, I just have two things. Number one, the coastal visioning process, which is the project that Kyle and the Coastal Advisory Commission has been working on, where we've held a number of different neighborhood gatherings over the past three or four months, is hosting an online Zoom workshop. They did one on Saturday, and they're having another one this Thursday. So if you would like to participate and listen to some of the feedback and conclusions from all of those different neighborhood workshops, it'll be this Thursday, April 30th, at 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and you can find the link right on the Coastal Advisory website, and link right in and participate in yet another virtual meeting. So I just wanted to bring that to folks' attention. And then just a plea to folks, that the Situate Food Pantry needs monetary donations. They cannot accept food, but if you can make a donation either by check, by mailing it to Post Office Box 120 in Situate, I know that they would be greatly appreciative, or you can go to their site and pay via PayPal. So hopefully it can help out our, our neighbors who are having a little bit of difficulty during this time. And that was it.
Thanks, Maura. Karen Canfield?
Yeah, very quickly, I wanted to report back to the board that the Public Building Yeah, very quickly, I wanted to report back to the board that the Public Building Commission did meet. If you recall, we were a little concerned with the cost of redoing the patio to comply with the ADA requirements necessary with the new walkway. They reviewed it. They were, as chagrined as we were at the cost, but on review of the scope, thought it was consistent with the work to be done. So they have approved that work. And unfortunately, it's at the high end of the range that they quoted to us at our meeting, but I wanted to let you know that those deliberations occurred. The other two things really quickly, the master plan, visioning and, and public meetings have been postponed. And we're going to try to regroup when we have a little more clarity of when people can come together. There's supposed to be one more scheduled public input before the writing begins. And Ben Bornstein in the Planning Department has indicated that we're going to put a little pin in that and feel we have a little more opportunity to have more robust conversation publicly. And the final thing is very exciting. The Economic Development Commission has been working with our chambers and other business organizations like the Harvard Merchants and, and other stakeholders to talk about how we're going to support reopening and our businesses in town. And what they'd like to do is to form a subcommittee within the Economic Development Committee, Commission, to bring together those stakeholders and marshal everybody's resources to come up with a plan to relaunch Situate from a business perspective. They will be putting together those groups, those parties shortly. Their plan is to work with Jim and the Board of Health and anyone else that needs to weigh in as they develop a plan that hopefully within one month, EDC will review and then present to us and, and give us all a plan that everyone in town can participate in to support our businesses. So that's a pretty exciting initiative I wanted the board to know about.
Great, that is great. And it's great that those groups are involved and can help us guide, you know, once we get word from the state, it's going to be, everyone's going to all go full, full bore ahead, so we need to have some...
So we need to have some...
Someone just joined.
Well, that's fun.
Okay, that may have been me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like a fire drill. It might have been.
Yes.
Thought to evacuate the building.
Okay. And Sean, do you have any?
Jim, yeah, I don't, we, we're forwarded the applicant for the oyster farm. Did you, or the, the, when will that be made public? The names that were forwarded to us, I believe?
I haven't seen that yet. I just know they did, I haven't looked at it yet, so.
Yeah. I haven't seen it either, Sean. I know the deadline was like around the 9th of April, and I think they have 60 days to bring them before us. So actually, Karen Canfield may know, I know someone's been in touch with Sue. I know they're going through the process, is that right, Karen?
Yeah.
You sent, the board actually got the list.
Was it the applicants that I saw? I can't, I didn't see my list.
There was a list.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, this is Karen.
Yes, Karen.
We did receive correspondence from the Shellfish Advisory, which provides their ranking of the candidates. And the next step is for us to begin interviewing those candidates.
Oh, great.
If that was my question to Jim was how the procedure, that, that was all. I just hadn't, you know, I hadn't been taking part of the meetings, obviously. And then finally, Jim, just thank you for mentioning, that was the document that I got that I could not get to you tonight, that you read, you know, regarding private marinas, townover arenas, state parks and so forth. So no, you hit the nail right on the head. Thank you for that.
Great.
That was all, Tony.
Thanks, Sean. Great. I think there's no correspondence, I don't think. Approval of the...
There's two letters, Tony.
Oh, right, there's the letter from Elliot. Do you want to, do you want to summarize that one, Karen? Or do you want me to?
Sure, there's that and one other. So the, the board received a letter from Deputy Fire Chief Al Elliott recently concerning operations at the Go Green facility on the Drift Way. The Fire Department has found that their operation is in violation, and if I mispeak Jim correctly, that they're in violation of fire code and that they will no longer be able to receive materials until they remedy, they will, they will no longer have a operation. Jim, can you just say it correctly? Because I know...
Yeah, basically the piles are too high and too big. If they don't get the piles down to meet the Fire Department's requirements, they'll lose their license to have a mulch storage, which means they'll be out of business. So I drove by this morning, they had about four bulldozers and all kinds of things down there working to try to get it done. But I'll have to snow with Al Elliott and find out where they are. But right now, the piles can't be more than 25 feet high. And I think when Sean McCarthy went out there, they were 41 feet high. So they're in violation, and unless they come in compliance, then the Fire Department will not renew their license.
Okay, and he's been given a copy of the letter and...
Yep.
Okay. And we've met with him before about the other, the other boundaries and the other stuff, were those mentioned as well?
Well, that's not under the Fire Department's purview.
I think some of it was in terms of the boundaries, you know, the back...
There's lengths and widths and how tall they can be. Once he gets in compliance with the Fire Department, if he gets in compliance with the Fire Department, then we have to have the conversation with the guy about making it so he can actually get in and out of the place, because it's just a mess.
Okay, so should we send a letter from the board? Or do you want to wait until...
Well, if you just want to send a letter from the board saying, you know, you've had numerous meetings with us, blah, 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 and give them time to correct it, or have them come into a hearing, otherwise I'm not sure what you want to send for a letter. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, something along those lines. You know, that, that kind of, not only the size of the piles, but that was one of five or six things that we brought before him in the past.
Okay.
How does the board feel about that?
I, I agree with you, Tony.
Karen Canfield?
Yeah, I, I think that this has been an ongoing conversation, and anytime we can reinforce that we are not comfortable with their operations, the way they're managing them, I think is a good idea.
Sean?
Tony, I'm not going to have a comment abstained in this subject.
Karen Conley?
Yeah, my question is, are we going to allow him to still take in material?
Yeah, he has not lost his license yet. And I think what Jim just said is that if they don't get it under control, then the Fire Department will go and not renew the license.
But it just seems to me as though if, if he's got this growing mountain, that adding more to the growing mountain is counterintuitive.
The problem is if we tell him he can't take it, then we have to take it.
Well, that's...
No place else to put it. So we'll end up having to find some place that probably is the transfer station, which we don't have, and then spend money to dispose of which we don't have. So at this point, he's going to get so much out of there in such a short time, he should be able to make some space for what's coming in. We didn't have a bad winter, we don't have, it wasn't like the March 2018 storm where we had trees and limbs down on every street, every house, every yard. So he shouldn't be getting massive quantities from the residents of Situate at this point.
Well, I don't know about that. There's a lot of down stuff.
Well, I'm sure that, I read the, we all read the letter. It was a pretty stern letter, so I'm, I'm sure he'll take action. And why don't we just draft something? You and I can work on it. Yes, Sean?
Well, I, you know, this is not a, it's just a comment, it's not either way, so I just, I can add some information that if, if you would allow me to...
Yeah.
You know, just an observation that I made when I went by, okay? And I do know a little bit about this, so there, there was a piece of equipment in there that was not his own. So I think he brought some, the operator brought some outside equipment in that I happen to see that's very large. And, you know, that's exactly what it was doing, was grinding that pile to make it a marketable product to probably be shipped out. And I just saw other equipment, not his own. So I think he has brought, you know, just, just so you, just so you guys know, I think he brought in outside contract, an outside contractor to help facilitate this. From what I drove by, I could see it quite clearly.
Great.
Yeah, he was working out of someone.
You know, I'd like to think that's exactly what he's doing. So just to maybe, you know, make everyone rest a little easier, I think, I'm almost positive, I know, you know, I just drove by and saw that. I know what equipment is his and what equipment is, is not. So, you know, this was very large stuff that was owned by another contractor.
Great. Well, that's what we want. We want him to be successful, and we want him to, to run the operations right, so, okay. Was there one other correspondence, Karen?
Yeah, another, just the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail, which is supposed to be kicking off on May 20th, has been postponed until a date to be determined in September. So just let, you know, take that off your calendar.
Okay. Great. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to accept the meeting minutes for the Board of Selectment meeting held on April 7th, 2020.
Second by?
Second.
Ms. Canfield? And we'll have a roll call vote?
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
That's unanimous, five to zero. The last topic is to, most, actually before I do that, I do have a little bit of announcement to make. One of our leaders and one of our people that keeps us going and keeps us in order had a, had a birthday last week, and we want to just...
Next week.
Next week. Did I say last week? I meant next week. Is having a birthday next week, and we wanted to just wish her a happy birthday and give her a little card to show her appreciation for all the work you do, Lorraine.
Oh, thank you very much.
Happy birthday, Lorraine.
Happy birthday, Lorraine.
We won't sing.
I was supposed to be in Greece. Happy birthday, Lorraine.
This is way better than Greece.
Oh, this is way better than Greece, right?
Enjoy, enjoy your day and enjoy a nice night out when...
When you're able to.
When the world, when the world changes.
That's very nice, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, so again, Situate, stay healthy. Let's get through the next couple of weeks, and hopefully we'll be able to get back to some level of normalcy. That being said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second by?
Erica.
Mr. Harris? All in favor? Hi, our roll call?
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.